Great.
Right.
I think that's the start of the line.
Well, I.
And like you said.
It's really better to bring it up during debating about that.
Hello. Surprise that I started getting good answers.
There's a pretty big question.
One on ambush.
Good to see Jake's here because I've got stuff no one's heard about.
This block is still not defined.
Yeah, I've got.
I'm not anywhere. Okay, go ahead and call me in order then. Agenda is providing a tactic that I have a motion to approve the agenda or limits or.
I'll make that motion.
Discussion. All those favorages. Okay. Pass. Moving on to public comments, anybody signed up? The public comments will close up. Blue lawn reports, mayor's report, I do not have anything to report. The commissioner reports. And we'll start down here.
I just have two things, one, uh, thanks to the civil police department for all of their heightened awareness during back to school. It was really appreciated. I think it really helped with folks slowing down and on a really busy intersection. So thank you very much. Um, I also want to just, um, put my condolences out to the farmer family. Uh, we lost Tina Farmer yesterday. And for those of you don't know her, she was a, um, classmate of mine. Super amazing woman, uh, friend of everyone. And, um, she was a school teacher at children's public schools for fifth grade. And I know that you're probably really struggling today. And will be for a while. They've lost their teacher and, um, they've lost his wife and a lot of people in Jackson County lost their friend. She was a native and lifelong resident of Jackson County and their family on your bridge, please.
Um, I just wanted to bring up that on August or September twenty eighth, there's an event at the Jackson County Library that's a candidate forum for, uh, people who are running for this board. And so I think the town needs to know about that. Uh, because there'll be more, I think there'll be more than two or three of us there. It's a candidate forum. Eric, if you're looking at me like you don't. Uh.
I agree.
Okay.
We're gonna have someone to call a meeting and then work.
Okay.
He said September twenty.
September twenty eighth, um, it's in the even I forget the exact.
Six thirty to eight thirty.
Six thirty.
But there'll be no, there'll be no town business discussed there.
Right.
Yeah.
You, it doesn't matter. You're talking about town.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Correct. Yeah, but no decisions or anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you're still discussing it. So I think, I think it's safest thing is to add it as an agenda item and then just schedule it.
For sure. You want to add it as an agenda item today? I missed that part. Alright, after commission report, we can, then the, or guess we can.
Motion to have.
I've motioned to add it. The agenda.
Alright, we have a motion to amend the agenda to add item twelve under new business in discussion of the, uh, the commissioners forum, debate forum. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Tonight. Okay, alright. Agenda is amended.
Did you hear what you're.
I have nothing else.
Then go ahead. Okay. Hey, good morning, everybody. It's good to be back. Sorry, missed a couple meetings, especially due to COVID, which this round was not as bad as the original one, but, um, but yeah, it was, it was really crappy and, uh, I would recommend people being extra careful about picking it up. It's worse than the blue, but it's not like it was back in the day. Um, and the only other thing I have, as I was just out cruising around town, uh, just want to thank, uh, Jake, uh, Public Works and commissioners for funding it. Um, those crosswalk signs are going up down at Mill and Main and, uh, and Ino. Um, and I really think it's going to make it safer down there. And I appreciate y'all, uh, getting, getting that done. That's all I got. Thank you. I don't have any reports today.
Good morning. Um, I was gonna see if we could add, uh, the meet and greet for the, uh, Commissioner, Danny and Commissioner, um, Waldorf and Commissioner Pearson and myself are, um, working on, um, planning a meet and greet, but can we add that to the next agenda because we'll have the details in. Or, yeah, that's close. Okay. That's all, that's all I have.
Okay. Alright, that's it for commissioner's reports and we will next.
I've just got a couple of things. So the Commerce Department Secretary Michelle Sanders came last Wednesday, and the purpose of her visit was to learn about the Main Street program while touring women and minority owned businesses. Stops on the tour that I'd like to thank include the Chamber of Commerce, Fusion Spa, Farmhouse, Blackwell Mountain Door, Backseat Chocolates, Jackson General and Bridge Park. The secretary and her staff were very complimentary of Silva and enjoyed their visit. So thanks to everybody that made that happen. As an employment update, Pearson Owen resigned last week to take a job at Western, so we're advertising for a maintenance technician. Police with Blue Ridge Rail has been executed. Uh, town offices will be closed for Labor Day as a reminder. And then administrative staff will be busy with audit field work the week after Labor Day, September eighth, fifth through eighth. And tax bills will go out in the next few days. So we'll include a flyer with the QR code for the Pinnacle Park recreational needs survey that's part of the master plan. Any questions? Thank you.
Paige. We want to public works department before.
Morning, everybody. We'll start with an Allen Street update. South wall's roughly eighty-five percent completed. And upon completion of both the north and the south walls, hori- horizontal drains are going to be installed on both walls after they're done. Um, at the conclusion of that, the contractors want to begin construction of the retaining wall for Bryce Park. Sewer line relocation is underway. It's approximately fifty percent complete. Uh, new stormwater infrastructure is currently being installed on the north slide of that road grade and down slope. So they're kind of jumping around dodging the drillers right there. Also, we'll begin their installation of the water line in the next couple of weeks and the project remains on time and on budget currently. Um, like Paige said, the lease is filed with what, Power Blue Ridge Southern, I like, thank Eric, he did a lot of heavy lifting on that. So thank you, Eric. Uh, once we get a hundred percent plans, uh, from Odell, we'll be ready to send out bid packages and hope to be under contract by the fall. For that project. Um, people lots is working on permitting for the Bridge Park project. Uh, currently, so we're moving forward there as well. Been in pretty regular discussion with Da- David and other members of the Pinnacle Park Foundation on the invasive plant species removal. Uh, we got off to a little bit of a slow start. We didn't have a whole lot of interest, but we're getting some now. We're hopefully going to move forward with that late summer. Uh, maybe this fall, we'll be able to do a lot of herbicide applications, but maybe some pan remove and start as soon as possible. Um. In the coming weeks, I'll be filing the annual solid waste report, the NCVQ, as well as the Tree City USA application that we do every year. Um, Jackson County litter sweep is coming up, September sixteenth through the thirtieth. Uh, Public Works Department will be assist- assisting in that effort like we do every year. And I would encourage any of y'all that are interested to help with that effort as well. Uh, as Paige mentioned, we do have maintenance technician open until it's filled. Um, and the last Friday, Paige and I attended the North Carolina School and Government Course Purchasing and Contracting. Uh, this is good refresher with the depot and Bridge Park projects coming up. Any questions?
How long do you think the north wall will take? Start, starting on.
The north wall.
The one above Bryce Park.
Um. They've been, it's a smaller wall than the other one, lengthwise, but it'll be higher. I would think a month. Probably. I don't have a thought for my head, but I. And less. I agree with that, probably.
Questions? Want to please department report.
Not weird. Uh, excited to be at full staff. Uh, we have, uh, our two new officers are finishing their field training and hope to have them, uh, solo out, uh, uh, working very soon. Thank you for your comments about the, uh, our presence there, uh, around the high school. Certainly took an interest in that to try to mitigate any type of aggressive driving or, uh, traffic infractions and uh, seem to be pretty successful, uh, with the reduction in traffic crashes, uh, this, uh, start of the school year. Um. Our, uh, our work product continues to improve, uh, from a law enforcement perspective, uh, as we, uh, continue to grow and develop our staff and uh, thank you for your support and those of that.
Questions? Again, they start important. Well, you start a part of the board.
I want, uh. I'm gonna start off by saying that, uh, this year have been an early busy year for us, which is not really a good thing. Uh, we're at nine hundred and two dollars right now. It's first year. That's up about probably fifteen percent over this time last year. I'd say that's not really a good thing, but that's just indication of the growth of the area. In that, we've had, uh, a lot of our medical call. We're eggs, we all know that. Uh, on the medical call into things. Uh, we've only had to use Narcan twice in the last month, uh, which that's a good thing. That's went down some. Uh. We haven't used it at all outside of town, out in our outline district. So like I said, that's, that's good. Don't know, maybe there's not many drugs floating around, whatever, but that's, that's better than it has been. Uh, obviously ricks in downtown has been a big thing. Most of the fender benders, they don't believe we've had anybody hurt severely in any of the ricks. Uh, where it, we had seven of those last, last couple of weeks that we had to go out on. And, uh, ricks out in the county, it's not as much as on before. We actually had to do something. We won't go out a lot more than that. That's just where we actually have to do something. We keep count on that. Uh, probably in that six, uh, seven in town, it's probably been, I don't know, it's probably been thirty times. What that entailed. That's where it actually had to do something to the, either the car or the people. That's how we keep up with that. Other thing is, I'd like to also say that our new guy has started today. James Lewis is on board. He started this morning at eight o'clock. So we're full of staff too now. Uh, that's good. Uh, Saturday, this past Saturday, we had a training burn which involved our muslaid departments and everybody, which we need to do to so we keep up on our, on our attack plans and things, be ready to go. We've got some more of those scheduled. It's all involving that, uh, DOT right away at one oh seven. We're getting those buildings as they come available. We've got three in the works now. It's already scheduled. It'll be going on the next, let's see, the first one's Monday night. And then the next one's a week after Labor Day and the next one's two weeks after that, so. And there'll be more because there's lots of buildings that they're taking out out there. But that's a good thing because that name was the trainer of each leg and everybody gets kind of on the same page. That way when we do have a call, we know how to do it. It's kind of like when they had the Main Street fire when Greg lets, let us use his building at time for the training. When we had that fire not later that same year, it really helped. Because all of the farthest already knew what we were going to do.
That was a privilege. I really enjoyed that. Y'all let me in there and pick it.
We, we were glad to do it. I mean, it really helped us.
Yeah.
A lot of people won't let you do that with the building.
I was about to do.
Grateful that you did. They want to do it again one day.
Let's do all of sent you.
Yeah.
Stop breaking my necks.
Don't knock the windows down. Don't fill it full of water. But it was, it did help. And that, that's, that's just in me that for an example, because that's what we're doing now with these, these houses and buildings that we're getting.
So I have a question about that. So, um, you, when you go into these places that you're going to burn down, do you have to like a sweep ahead of time to kind of remove things that might be especially toxic because of being burned kind of thing?
That's, that's a requirement.
Okay.
North Carolina state law, we have to get what called our quality department trying fire, but and to get that, you have to get a company like Neo to come in and inspect for asbestos and stuff like that. If there's anything in it, then they have to remove it before we burn it.
Okay, okay.
And the state DOT is paying for all that. So it's not costing us anything. That's expensive, but DOT is putting the bill. And we're, we're grateful that they are, that we can do that.
Use it. Cool. Some kind of abatement.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
It's a big deal. Uh, man, they can tell you about that. It's been helping with permitting and the, uh, yeah, send it to Rawling and they have to prove what Neo did and all that. And then they'll send it back to us and then we have to send that Swan Noah to get apartment access burning.
Oh, cool.
It takes like a month to do that.
Well, I know it's kind of a pain, but it's, it's reassuring to know because that, like, I, you know, I, I was in contact with you, like, we could smell that in, in, inside the hospital the other day. Yeah, when that was.
Saturday.
We're like, what is on fire? Is there someplace in the hospital? But it was that, just that smoke, you know, just going to wrap around.
That Saturday, there evidently was something like a brush fire around the state because it was everywhere.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Done what you do. Yeah. But, but no, uh, good. Thank you. I'm glad that there's some kind of process to.
Got that work. You can't burn it without that. I'll leave. We won't.
Yeah. So, yeah, for sure.
I mean, like, you were gonna tell me it's a house burn. Somebody still has to do that.
Yeah.
And to, it's asbestos abatement to do, you're talking about some pretty good money.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to dispose of and all that.
Yeah. Cool.
So it's hard to get these houses trained and most people they'll turn them down rather than burning them. But the thing is, even when you turn it down, you still have to do that.
Sure.
Yeah, do asbestos abatement, take it to landfill or whatever.
Yeah.
If you notice, they are turning some of them down. Some of the buildings the state gave us all to build. To burn. But some of them were not in good locations and things like that without shutting the road down. And then thank police department would appreciate the shutting down on the big intersection, our KLC, because that's what we had to do when those center turned down. And so we didn't, didn't do that.
Now, we all appreciate that either. So, okay, great. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, so that's all I have. Any question?
Questions?
Thank you.
Want to mainstream.
Good morning. Uh, I wanted to thank you guys all for authorizing us to work with the State Commerce Department on the creating outdoor recreation economies. Uh, we just finished that plan. I emailed it to all of you. So let me know if you have any questions or comments. And then the next step, we're bringing that to, uh, building outdoor communities. We have a really nice group of Jackson County folks assembled, um, to work through that process. I think it takes about eight months. Um, but the end result comes up with things like funding for projects, election for projects and things like that. So we're really excited and we've already started to work on several of the initiatives that are in there, such as the Bridge Park Expansion Project that Jake's working on, a pedestrian and bicycling connectivity plan to Dillsborough, and exploring two possible outdoor economy events for downtown Silva. So we really appreciate everyone who participated in that process. Um, I also finalize our twenty twenty-two Main Street reinve- uh, Main Street reinvestment statistics. So I wanted to give you guys some of the highlights, um, in our totals uh, for jobs. And this is just for downtown, the Main Street District. We created twenty-four full-time jobs. Um, and the businesses that were added were thirteen. Uh, we had one million four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in new private investments. And, um, a total of six hundred and ninety-seven volunteer hours, which the state has a calculation for, and that totals about twenty thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. So I was very excited to see what came up with all of those totals and how, um, Silva continues to grow and evolve. Um, also, I was accepted into the Appalachian Regional Commission's Investment Framer cohort. Um, this is funded through Mountain Bizworks and it's designed to empower us to adequately spot a good investment project, shepherd the project along, and bring the right resources and partners to the table. So, um, in that process, we actually bring a project with us and work on it. And so I'm working on two downtown building projects in that cohort. So we're, you know, hopeful to see really good results from that. And finally, uh, Jackson County TDA and the Town of Silva were selected for a Western Carolina capstone project, where graduate students will explore sustainability plan for the Town of Silva, which will include a comprehensive, uh, audit, uh, sustainability audit. And that's, uh, the purpose is to evaluate the current state of the town, suggest recommendations for making its businesses, operations, parks and outdoor assets as practices more sustainable. So I know several of you have uh, an interest in that. And as we get all that data together, you're welcome to attend the presentation. I'll get you that date later on in the semester. Do you have any questions?
Is that all?
That's a lot of stuff.
Yeah. I've been busy.
I've had a couple of questions about the social district. Can you refresh, if you don't mind, everyone on the current days and hours of a social district?
Sure. It's, uh, Monday through Saturday, eight AM to nine PM. And on Sundays from one, uh, from ten AM to nine.
I can't remember. Are we, um, are we bringing that back up to extend past nine, like to ten o'clock? Is that something that we, I don't know if we've discussed that yet.
It hasn't been within a year when it's been passed. So it's not eligible to be brought up yet.
Any other questions?
Uh, yeah, something caught my attention in that outdoor hunting report, the trail from Silva to Pinnacle Park, which, uh, this sounds great. And I'm assuming you're looking at like, Bill's, Dillsco, Dills Branch? Is that the connection?
Well, so. So the Town of Dillsborough, uh, got all the funding to, um, put a pedestrian bridge over where the temporary bridge was.
Yeah.
Um, during the construction. And so we're working on the Silva and, uh, Jake has, has looked at the options to be able to create a pedestrian and bike lane along with a, a traffic lane on that one section of road by B and L's.
Okay, no, you're, so you're talking about the connection between Dillsborough and Silva.
Right.
But, but there was, but mention there of Silva up to Pinnacle Park, a trail from Silva to Pinnacle Park. I know it's been explored in, in the past, right? When they did the Mountains to Seed Trail, trying to go up Dills Branch or something to Pinnacle Park, because it does connect, but it was a piece that wasn't public?
No, that's, I, yeah, I didn't mention that. I know that's part of what the Building Outdoor Communities, um, program is going to do. We have Dennis Desmond in that group, um, and they're looking at all aspects of that, but it's a, it's a much longer term project. Um, and so our, our focus will be on the connectivity in Dillsborough. Um, Pinnacle Park will be, you know, probably later on in the process.
Not, no, uh, not the right. Jake or Paige.
Are you sorry? We done with the matrix?
Yeah.
Questions? No? Okay, go ahead.
Oh, it was just that I noticed that I didn't mention it. It was the, um, the Skyland Cywoks are coming along. And what's the, um, current completion date? I mean, they got curbs in now. It's like, it's getting there.
Uh, the original completion date was August.
I know.
April, because it's locked with a project in Maggie Valley.
Oh, okay. But it is definitely, there's progress. So.
It's a long period of project in ninety.
Yes, because they didn't receive any bids. So they combined two small projects to make a larger one, to make it more enticing to contractors to bid.
Okay.
I hear you say next April. So two slow projects.
Small projects is what I said.
I've heard slow.
Yeah.
And they have their sponsors.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Anyways, but yeah, I just, it's, it's happening for sure. Alright. Uh, move on to cross the board before, um, I don't have anything else to note except for, I enjoy what you mentioned, this progress that they're on the home streets initiative I have. Uh, so we'll close that one. This is any questions on cross the board report. And Pinnacle Park report. Uh, so you mentioned the survey. Uh, so there will be a survey going out soon. Um, for, uh, recreational uses of Pinnacle Park. So I encourage everyone to pull that out. There'll be mailing. Uh, we'll fit on our website and, uh, at if you are going, we can take the survey. Um, and then accepting the, uh, bids for the invasive root. So, Pinnacle Park is, is covered, I think. Questions? On that? I guess just, uh, that was nice, kind of combining it with the, you know, with the, the tax. With the taxes going out, having, you know, having, that's going to go right to all the residents of Town of Silva. So that was a nice move, because it's hard, it's kind of hard with these surveys to get it in front of people, but.
It'll go to property owners. It's like, there has to be a real push to get it to residents.
Yeah, yeah. It's a complicated procedure to get it to residents. Yeah, unfortunately, our, our tax mailing is good to property owners, which aren't necessarily residents. Exactly. But, but if we have another way of getting it to residents, we have registration lists and stuff, so. Alright. Questions, comments? All closed on reports. So move to new business. The first item we have is a civil penalties discussion. Uh, most of it.
Yes, I'll be good. So as we're going through our repotification, um, and two thousand twenty-one, there was legislation passed that decriminalized all town ordinance. Um, the two, the police department is recommending that we include as misdemeanors when we repotify are section twenty-four thirty-seven, discharging firearms within town limits and section twenty-four thirty-eight, Molotov cocktails. So the request is for those to be misdemeanors. So the board can decide, can decide that today and through discussion, then give us direction on what to do for those when we repotify.
And then also included the packet was the suggestion to modify handles.
Yes, and we'll bring that to you another time.
Okay, okay. We're gonna drop that one.
Yeah. I, I mean, we can discuss the, we can discuss what's been included. Um, there were just a couple of sections where the police department suggested we mention animal control as have, as being the enforcing authority, which is a good idea, but there are going to be more chapters that we'll bring to you. So if you want to tackle that today, you can, or if you just want to have, if you just want to take it easily and to have the discussion on the misdemeanors of those two.
Alright, we'll see how two discussions.
Okay.
Yeah. Alright, so two separate ones. I guess you want two separate motions or discussions on those.
Yes, I think that's what I guess.
So the, the, part of the easiest one, my book is the disbarning firearm. That was pretty straightforward, but love that one, discussion for making that misdemeanor. So what is it now?
It's in our ordinance as a misdemeanor, but it's been decriminalized by legislature. So all towns and counties have to re- redo those.
Got it. So we need, uh, we need to make it, it's not just a verdict. So we need to put I'm sorry, we need to make it a misdemeanor. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's the discussion.
Yeah. Well, yeah, okay. So it used to be that blanket an ordinance violation wasn't, that's not the case. So we have to specifically mention that the violation of this ordinance is a misdemeanor.
And I need to slightly reference. Make a motion that we, misdemeanor. I get a misdemeanor to start a firearm, so.
So is it, like, what are the penalties for this misdemeanor?
I want to say it's a class three misdemeanor.
Okay, so what is a class three misdemeanor?
Uh, it could, it could entail some, uh, incarceration, but generally not.
If your record is misdemeanor by long.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Not in place. Today's, today's our word. You're growing out of it and.
Totally.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understood. Um, but clearly, uh, this is a small community and how, and houses are, um, pretty tightly packed and it's important, I think, to let people know. Hopefully someone would know and be very responsible, but a lot of times folks aren't, but that think about that they're, uh, not only could they shoot somebody because they're going to go right to the target and into their neighbor's house, uh, or whatever, um, by accident, but it's, um, yeah, it's like, it's, it's a real safety hazard. So, uh, it's currently, you said it, class three?
If, if you choose.
If we choose to. That, I mean, that's kind of like, okay, but, and then, sorry, I'm not up, uh, up to speed on all the different, uh, misdemeanors. So uh, is class one is worse, I would assume, or class, you know, is, how does it go with the classes and misdemeanors? Uh, or the other way, classifieds where?
It would, it goes, um, one, two and three.
Okay. And which is the, which is the strictest? Their most.
One, one, one A, one B and a R.
Okay, gotcha. So, um, so is there room to make this a, a one instead of a three? Or I don't know, I'm just gonna throw that out to the board and see.
I don't make this. And John and I don't know off the top of my head if we can go higher than that or not, but that's something to get that unless I don't know off the top of my head if we can make it more. More criminal.
Yeah. I mean, don't we just specify whether something's a misdemeanor or not? And it's up to the, the police department, what they specifically charge with, or what is it? We, we know, we just say what it is, what's class, it's a, what's the proposal. And they just say this.
And they just say misdemeanor.
Three.
Says three.
Last three like it was. We're just making it what it was before the states then.
They took it away, yeah.
They simply get took away the blanket statute that made a violation of any ordinance a misdemeanor. So the governing bodies have to go back and specifically state which which ones are misdemeanors. And class three is the appropriate. From my understanding, this is again, my opinion, not a not an attorney, not a prosecutor, but in reading the statutes. That is, that would be my opinion.
Gotcha. How um how many calls do you get? Every month or?
Very, very rare. They're very rare. Think in the two years I've been here, I can think of. Two, two or three.
There's one a couple of months ago.
I mean, I hear it all the time.
Yeah, and well, some of these are outside outside limits too, because it doesn't take much. That's what's always tough.
Yeah, I hear him too. But I mean, do you do you want to make this more strict? Are you happy with the recommendation or?
Uh, I guess I would, you know, like, yeah, of course, my knee jerk is to make it more uh more strict, but I'm not sure if that needs a little more. Research and need, you know, what does that all mean to make it more strict? But at the very least, I want to make sure that it comes on. A misdemeanor. So I guess that could be a separate discussion, um, you know.
I mean, in in my book, the fact that you make it illegal a misdemeanor is the deterrent. The actual punishment that the person gets is not much of a deterrent. It doesn't make that much of a difference.
But it also makes staying ahead, that's more of how we feel about it at town, how important this is to get paid. So I guess that could be a different, but I'd be fine with a separate discussion.
That could be done later too, by the way. I do have a question. Is are the two that we're discussing. Discharging a firearm in town limits and volatile cocktails. Are they just the low hanging fruit? And how are like, we're, so we're saying that the states said. Everything was is no longer a misdemeanor. I've heard you being an ordinance, so we have to pick the ones that we want to be misdemeanors. Again, is this just the low hanging fruit? Are we going to be doing this? More things over time? In reviewing the existing ordinances, there were uh. S- sections in certain chapters that made violations of any of those misdemeanors. It's my understanding, again, my opinion, I'm not an attorney or prosecutor, but that would suffice. To charge those violations of those ordinances as misdemeanor. These two specifics that were recommended had no such language in there at all. So these two specifics were missing the language that that made them a misdemeanor, even if the state made the blanket. Statement that by that an ordinance is not automatically a misdemeanor. So other ones do contain the language.
Okay, required, I got you.
Or they got a state statute.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Only if in certain situations.
Possession of a molotov cocktail is okay. Now, using it is illegal.
That was my question.
And I mean, like, so John actually did a whole lot. More work on the ordinances than um we're actually talking about today. Um, and that was forwarded. I got that yesterday and I called Paige and I went. This is odd. Um, so good job, John. And so I don't know if it's like you, but we would like to get with you and we'll go through the, because, yeah, you're right, some of these ordinances are. Go out there and then a lot of this are already covered by state statute that we needed to wipe them out. Um. And that's why I was, I started looking at this molotov cocktail. I'm like, what do you mean? Molotov cocktails then have some state statute against it. And it does as far as. Um, incendiary devices, but that's only if you use them.
Possession is illegal at a civil disorder.
Yeah, you can't carry it around there because. The rally up here, um, just an intimidation factor, just like you can't carry. Firearms at the rally. But apparently you can, you can sell them and you can't do all the other stuff, but apparently then the regals actually make them and just keep them around in your house.
All right, let's let's uh wrap up. We do have a motion on the table for the. Topic here. All right, uh, do we want to, any amendments or changes to that or, you know, the motion table?
Say the motion.
I guess, I guess as as it was presented in the. Could be a class three misdemeanor. Any more discussion on that one? Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor, raise your hands. Say aye. Okay, the motion passes. Now we'll move on to the molotov cocktail, which hopefully. Quite a simple, quick previous one, okay. Um, so first thing caught my attention. So in the your packet, you didn't have the exact language. It just said that we're making molotov cocktails. Um, so um. My first concern is that are we making possessing a molotov cocktail, throwing it? I mean, having the ingredients for one, um, like what exactly is becoming a misdemeanor in this? Because I'm pretty sure I have all the ingredients necessary for a molotov cocktail.
So the ordinance says it's unlawful for any person to manufacture, possess, transport or use any molotov cocktail or other firearm. Firearms, that's subsection B. C is materials prohibited. It should be unlawful for any person to possess all the items or materials needed to. Manufacture molotov cocktails or other firebombs. Now. Honestly, I got, so I think B is covered of what. Is prohibited. But C, the materials, that's probably where it needs some work.
We're on all that in the shop right now.
Kind of feel like they were talking about electronics.
And a molotov cocktail.
Yeah, it's a gas in a rack, right?
But if someone had a crate and they had all of those ingredients, a crate would be pretty obvious. They're making molotov cocktails.
I don't know. I keep arriving with my gasoline. All right, so I guess, so is the proposal then? So let's get, let's get specific on what's getting proposed here.
Existing ordinance, just as you can't can't possess the ingredients necessary to make a molotov cocktail. Is that what I heard? Hard to enforce. Everyone's got them. You're saying it doesn't need to be in there? In that language, I would say specifically. Possession of the materials needed to produce that does not need to be illegal. Yes, sir. That's what I would say too. That doesn't make any sense to me. Okay, the manufacturer of that will be placing all of those materials together. To create a molotov cocktail, firebomb, incendiary device.
All right, so the fully assembled molotov cocktails now.
Propose to be just. Yes, okay.
And and but it's also like firebombs and is it, I mean, I, it seems, but this is specific to a. Molotov cocktail, I mean, or could it just be like, I'd I'd go with all firebombs. Yeah, I mean, it's 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 calling it the molotov cocktail thing or for you, but it's just the language. But at any rate, yeah. I I think um it's pretty be obvious that you should not, that it should be a misdemeanor to assemble and use.
So so my state defines. A molotov cocktail falls under the definition of an incendiary device in state statute. So they define, the state defines an incendiary device as any incendiary bomb or grenade, firebomb or similar device. Including any device which consists of or includes a breakable container, including a flammable liquid or compound and a quick. Those of any material which, when ignited, is capable of igniting that flammable liquid or compound. Can be carried or thrown by one individual active. A motion that would make a misdemeanor again, but remove the laws about. Possession, the ingredients, because that's too vague and.
And that's your recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, but yeah, that motion clear enough? Any further discussion on it? All those in favor, raise your hands. Say aye. Uh, how does everyone feel about debating the animal? I thought that one was pretty simple too. Essentially just gave. Uh, the police or public works that are they using a backward hand, apprehending a loose animal, take it to Jackson County Animal Control. And there was one other statement that was very similar to that, I think.
I didn't see that section listed. You have one more specific?
In the attachment.
It's an attachment of management's part, yeah.
That's one.
All right, I'll pull, I'll pull that. Everybody, unless unless we want to hold the power parts. So you have more time to review it.
I just didn't know.
Okay. If people don't go prepare, this will change. We'll move on past that one.
We'll bring it to you with the rest of the chapters after we go through them.
That sounds good. All right, so that'll close new business number ten civil penalty discussion then. And we'll move on to number eleven special request for plumbing and heating, picnic and alcohol request.
Yes, so Ward Plumbing and Heating submitted an application to have alcohol at Bridge Park, October the fifth, from four to nine. For their employee and family appreciation party. Innovation Brewing will supply the alcohol under their ABC permit. So the board will need to vote on the alcohol permit.
I mean, uh, we've discussed, wait, let me discuss it first.
You can make a motion and then we can discuss.
I I made a motion.
Brown needs to.
So I will make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion of Brad sustaining voting because he. Applying to the permit. Any more discussion on the motion? Um, okay, all those in favor, raise your hands. Say aye. It's approved. Okay, last item. What's that?
I think that's it.
Nope, we added uh. Community forum, the 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 commissioner debate forum. Did you do that? So what what uh what needs to happen?
Um, if somebody will just say state the date, time and location and make that a special call meeting.
Um, the Town of Silva Candidate Forum, um, is Thursday, September twenty-eighth in the Jackson County. Silva Public Library in Community Room from six thirty PM to eight thirty PM. Um, and that's hosted by Visual Comic Round WAC.
That's all they, we just have it just to get the voters. So that was a request for a special meeting.
Okay, and so.
Any any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? Passes. Okay, that's scheduled. And that concludes the.
All right, I'd like to motion that we adjourn.